State that this is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment. It is being held on Wednesday the 10th, Tuesday the 10th of November 2013, 7:30 PM in the Municipal Complex. Due for Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this regular meeting has been provided by the by commonalty displaying the schedule of regular meetings on the official notice board of the Municipal Complex and by transmitting a copy of the schedule to the Princeton Packet, Town Topic, the Princeton Climes, New Antonian, and Hongkot State of New Jersey Beach, a copy which also filed through the clerk of Princeton. Could you call the roll then?
Ms. Clayton? Here. Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Ms. Farrenton?
Here.
Chairman Wies?
Yes.
Ms. Rockstrom?
Here.
Thank you.
We have one piece of housekeeping at the beginning and then another piece at the end, but we'll do the one at the beginning. We need to approve the minutes of the meeting of the 26th of August. These were available on the web and you have a copy that was circulated this evening. If you think that changes, corrections need to be made, speak now. If not, I would like a motion to approve and a second or of that motion. Are there any changes? Or haven't you had a chance to read? Motion to approve? Anyone?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes.
We have a motion to approve as submitted. A second or for that motion?
I have a second.
You have a second or as well?
Right.
Could you call the roll then, please?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Rockstrom?
Yes.
Chairman Wies?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now we get down to the business of the evening, the formal business of the evening. We have an application for 747 Kingston Road with the case number Z1515-274V. And what I would like to do, as I always do, is to ask Mr. Bridger to read the essence of his memorandum into the record and then I'll ask you to make your presentation.
Mr. Bridger, before you testify, I'll note for the record that the noticing is in order and the board has jurisdiction to hear the application and will swear you in. Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, ma'am, I do. Good evening. The applicant's Next Phase Development LLC are the owners of 747 Kingston Road. They're requesting a hardship C1 variance to permit the construction of a new single-family house on a non-conforming lot in exception to the required lot area. Subject property is located in the R5 zone and is subject to the use in bulk regulations in Sections 10B, 253, 255, and 246 of the former Princeton Township Land Use Ordinance. The existing single-family use is permitted as of right. The required lot area is 21,780 square feet and the existing is 20,000 square feet. The existing single-family house will be demolished and a new structure will be constructed. Applicants should address whether they have contacted any adjoining property owners and offered either to sell the subject property to them or inquire if they would sell the applicant's sufficient lot to create a complying lot. Applicant states the new single-family dwelling will comply with all the applicable bulk requirements. As I stated earlier, the required lot area is 21,780 and they have an existing lot area of 20,000 square feet. They're requesting a C1 variance. I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Bridger? No, thank you. So would you make your case?
I'm not sure your mic is on.
Is that better? Thank you.
It's glowing, so we should now hear you.
Thanks. Oh, here. So, once again, Gary Fortune of the firm Stark &amp; Stark here on behalf of the applicant. Next Phase Development has indicated we have an undersized isolated lot and as a result we can't increase the size of the lot. As we've always done in these scenarios, and I'm sure that you've probably required, we sent notice to each of the adjacent property owners, asking them if they're interested in buying this lot at fair market value or offering to purchase some additional land that they may have in excess. Indeed, out of the four lots that touch on this lot, three of them are also undersized and we got no response from the fourth. Of the two, of the four that we did send notice to, one sent us back a response, and I will submit a package in just a minute. One sent us back a response saying they had no objection to the application. Another one I heard from today, and as far as they want to see the lot redeveloped because of the existing home there, is, let's say, substandard. It needs some work. And it's an opportunity to improve the quality of the property and improve the neighborhood as well as a result of that. But the focus as indicated today is on the C1 variance, the hardship, and given the fact that we don't have access to additional land, I would submit that the hardship is inherent in that. As far as the negative criteria, the lot is about 8 percent if my calculations are correct, less than your ordinance requires. It is consistent with most of the lots that are out there, so I don't think that anyone's going to notice a difference. I think the real result here is we're taking a house that has seen better days and using it as an opportunity to renovate the property and to build a new home on there. What I have and what I'll submit for the record is a copy of my letter, and we've already submitted this to your professionals, a copy of my letters to each of the adjacent property owners, as well as the one written response that we had gotten, which as I indicated, comes from Jerry Muller and indicates he has no objection to the variance request. And I've also given you an affidavit of service, so we indicate that we've served this by, I believe, and let me just make sure I don't misspeak, by certified and regular mail to each of the adjacent property owners, and we've given you the certified receipts as well. You want to mark that all as one package?
Yes.
I'll mark that as A1. And to whom would you like me to submit that to?
Uh...
For the time being?
Me.
Thanks.
Thank you.
That's the nature of the application here this evening. I have our engineer who'd be happy to go through the application with you. Probably should put a little bit of information on the record in any event, but we'll try to make it abbreviated because, as always, Mr. Bridger did a thorough job in terms of giving you the overview of this application. If we could have Mr. Schmidt sworn in, please?
Sir, would you state your name for the record?
David Schmidt.
And we'll swear you in. Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Dave, if you would please describe your educational professional background?
I'm a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I've been practicing engineering for 30 years now. First 10 years was with Ankleef Engineering in the Bellmead office, and 20 years I've had my own business of DS Engineering that is located in Rocky Hill, New Jersey. I've been doing land development, presentations in front of the boards for 20 years, mainly in Hillsborough, Montgomery, Franklin. This is my first time in Princeton.
And in the context of previous times that you've presented testimony to the boards, you've been accepted and qualified as an extra witness and professional engineer?
Yes, I am.
With that, I ask that you...
No problem accepting, yes.
Thank you very much. Dave, first of all, you heard the background that Derek gave with regard to this application?
I did.
And that information that he provided is true and accurate?
It's exactly how I spelled it out in my presentation.
Okay, wonderful. If you would just very briefly show the board what it is that we're proposing, where it's located, so they understand the nature of the application. In light of the presentations that they've made thus far, I think probably the board probably appreciated abbreviated presentation as opposed to a lengthier presentation?
I will try to abbreviate it as quick as possible. I have two exhibits. I don't think they need to be marked as exhibits.
They're all part of the plan set that was previously submitted. If we can have those to be declared as part of the record, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, the first exhibit is the variance plan, which was prepared by this office. It was dated September 30th in 2015, and that is what we have on the easel right now. The property is located on the east side of Kingston Road. The physical address is 747 Kingston Road, lot area 20,000. The property zone is R5, which is one-half residential, and the square footage is 21,780. The property has the required 100-foot frontage on Kingston Road. Property currently has an existing single-family house. It's a residential dwelling that's located in the center of the lot and has a concrete drive in the front. The property was purchased by my client August 2015. That is Next Phase Development, care of John Mastriani. What we're proposing to do is demolish the existing house and construct a new single-family dwelling, basically in the same location as the existing house was. We're going to utilize a portion of the existing drive and put a courtyard in. There is, on the existing condition plan, two parking spots that are right by the right-of-way and also a sidewalk and an additional parking area that's existing right next to the property line. That does not meet the current bulk standards and that area will be removed. So we're actually making the situation a little better than what is currently proposed. As Derek pointed out, that we're 1780 square feet under what we needed. As Gary went over, we can't purchase additional lots, areas from additional lots, as they're undersized, and he reached out to them. Real shortly, I'm going to go over the tax map. This is my next exhibit. It is sheet number 59. I'm not sure if that needs to be an exhibit as well, but...
If you would take the portable mic.
Is this working?
I'm just going right back.
Oh, okay.
Going right back.
Never mind.
I highlighted in yellow the Lot 5 in Block 5903. And I'm going to go in a, one around, Lot 1 is the irregular-shaped lot. That's the only lot that has an area that is over a half an acre. The adjacent lot, Lot 4, has .46. Our lot has .46. The lot right next to it has .46. And the lot behind it is Lot 20 has .42. All the lots that are in this area that is around Kingston Road, Prospect Ave., and Carnegie Drive in this area are all undersized, except for the one lot that I pointed out, which is that pie-shaped lot that's located off of Carnegie Drive and it's Lot 1. As Derek pointed out, we're seeking relief from Sections 10B, 253, and 255, and 10B, 246 of the Princeton Township Land Development Ordinance. The utilities that we have is sanitary sewer, which is public. We have water, which is public, telephone, and bark, and PSENG is gas and electric. And pretty much that's what we're seeking for. We can purchase land from adjacent properties, and as Gary pointed out, letters were issued and no responses back.
Just a couple of quick questions for you. The lot that we're proposing to redevelop in this particular case you've indicated, and I just ask you to confirm, is in keeping with the neighborhood that surrounds it?
Yes, sir.
And are there any detriments to the publichood that you can envision by virtue of being able to redevelop this lot?
I do not.
And indeed, there are two things that we talked about that are in fact improvements. One is you're able to eliminate the existing nonconformity with regard to the location of the driveway, and the second is being able to take a house, it's a bit of an eyesore, and be able to rebuild something that's new, modern, state-of-the-art, et cetera. In other words, something that's going to be attractive to the neighborhood as opposed to a detriment to the neighborhood.
It is going to be attractive. It's going to actually uplift the neighborhood and other people will follow, I believe.
I have no further questions of Mr. Schmidt?
Do we have questions for Mr. Schmidt? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address this? If you would come forward. Sorry? I didn't, I thought you...
I do have a question. So, when I'm looking at the site plan, I'm interested to see that the property line actually goes into the right-of-way of Route 27. And I just, I'm not, I'm a little bit confused by that.
Are you referring to the driveway in particular?
No, I'm referring to the whole front part of the property. It's probably about 15 feet, is beyond the line that says 99 feet width of the King's Highway right-of-way.
So...
The road is right there.
So, I don't know if you're familiar with the King's Highway, but if you go back to the 1700s, some people question whether the right-of-way is wider than it actually is. The right-of-way as shown and otherwise indicated is the property line that's shown there. But it's a technical title issue that sometimes comes up because no one can be quite sure going back to the 1700s, maybe even earlier than that, you know, whether the King's Highway is something wider than that. So we see that as sometimes an exception to title, but the actual property line is what's shown on the plan.
The property line, but not the, but the right-of-way is a genuine right-of-way. It goes right through the center of Princeton as well.
What's that?
So the town, the town could take over that front?
What's that?
The town could take over that front part of the property along the whole entire length of the...
So I think the answer to that question is that's really an open question in terms of whether the right-of-way includes that additional land or not. That's really a technicality that I'm not sure that anyone can answer the question for at this point in time.
Maybe you want to comment on the front yard setback that you're proposing. Presumably, it's not going to intrude on the King's Highway right-of-way. And are you going to acknowledge the mean setback of adjacent houses on that road and keep your setback...
The basics of the house, we do have a portion that jets out, which is the garage area. But the line, the existing house and the proposed house is in line with each other as well as the other houses. We have a vicinity map in the corner of the plans and that shows all the lines or all the house fringes are in line.
But you're showing only the existing house on your tax map. You're not showing the new house?
No, the new house is below. There's two views on the plans.
But in context of the neighborhood, you're not showing the new house. You're showing the existing house.
Right, oh, on the vicinity map. Yes.
Does anyone else on the board have a question?
Yeah, I was asking about the right-of-way.
The only thing that would impact the right-of-way is whether the lot area is really including the right-of-way or not, because then that's going to impact your floor area ratio.
And what your setback is for your building, too.
Well, the setback is still 26 feet.
26 feet from the right-of-way, yeah.
So it's really just the FAR.
We had a member of the audience who wished to make a comment. You'll have to be sworn in by our attorney so that you tell us the truth and then you can tell us who you are.
Sir, would you first state your name and address for the record?
My name is Zia Mian. I live at 755 Princeton Kingston Road.
All right, now I'll swear in. If you'd raise your right hand...
Is the microphone on? I can't... Mine is. I don't know if, no.
It seems to be so.
Hold it so that you can speak into it.
Okay, is that better?
All righty. Sir, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
So, I, as I said, my name is Zia Mian. I live in the house next door to this property that is proposed to be redeveloped. By way of background, I'm a physicist and I work at Princeton University, and I've lived in that house for about seven years. So I have three concerns about this property, and I was surprised that the gentleman didn't mention that we have been trying to call the phone number that was given on the letter that was sent to us and unsuccessfully, in the sense of getting an answer until today.
If I might, just so you're not only speaking, you and Wyon and I spoke a couple of, or spoke at length.
You didn't mention it in your remarks, so I didn't know that you were willing to acknowledge that we had called. So I have three concerns about this proposed redevelopment. The first is that I'm not, you know, as sophisticated in my understanding of zoning and property rules as these gentlemen, but the first is that in the time that the property next door was on sale, we have seen it fall into significant neglect. So the fact that it wasn't selling or that now the owners believe they have to knock it down is, you know, not a surprise, given the condition it was allowed to fall into. The second is that, as far as I understand it, this new house that they propose to build will be significantly closer to our house than the existing house in terms of how they propose the new footprint of this house to be. And the significance of this is that we recently signed an agreement for a new solar system to be installed on our roof prior to being informed of this redevelopment. And so one concern we have is that the size and location of this house will, may impact the return that we get on the solar system that we have installed on our roof. Because the deal that was done, as some of you may know, in terms of the solar systems that are now being on offer, are that the solar system is of fixed capacity and the electricity that it generates, we pay for to the solar company. And so as the amount of light that falls on the roof becomes less, you know, the amount of electricity that it generates becomes less, therefore we have to pay more to PSENG to make up for that difference. And so that's one concern, that, you know, there will be a consequence from that, which, since we haven't seen exactly how high in the exact dimensions of the roof and the location of the roof of the house is unclear, but, you know, it is a concern since the solar system was designed with the footprint of the current house in mind. The second concern is that there's a lot of water that runs off from the road and the house next door down the hill because of the nature of the terrain there. And so our front yard often gets water that pours through from the house that is proposed to be redeveloped. So one question is what happens to that runoff as this new house is built in terms of the impact on our property in terms of the water that our house and our garden will be exposed to? The last concern that I have is a larger one, and that is that the house that is proposed to be built, as far as we understand it, is very large in comparison to not just our house, but the other houses that are in the immediate vicinity, in the sense that it is disproportionately large to the size of the lot, otherwise there would be no need for a variance. And so one of the concerns that we have is that if they wish to redevelop the property, what is wrong with building a house that is of a fitting size for the size of the lot? As opposed to building one that is disproportionately large in comparison to the houses that are in the immediate vicinity? And I see the value that they may see in having the largest possible house so that they can sell it for the largest amount of money, but that's their interest. Our interest is in the nature of the neighborhood and the houses and the proximity that we have to each other and what it means for the environment in the immediate area. So with that, I will conclude my remarks.
Just so you're aware, they're actually not seeking a variance for the size of the house. They're just seeking a variance for the size of the lot. So their proposal is they're building within the bulk regulations, the size that they can build. It's just that the lot that they own is too small.
So this was, you know, I'd be happy to have you explain it to me. What I don't understand is that the lot is too small for the house they want to build.
No, no.
No, it's too small to be consistent with the zoning ordinance for a lot size. It's not too small to build a house on. The house that is going to be built will have to have setbacks which are consistent with the zoning in that area, and the house that is to be built must recognize all of those setbacks and so on. We've raised a point with the right-of-way, and I'd like to ask Mr. Bridger's opinion about whether that King's Highway right-of-way is used in calculating the floor area ratio of the house that's going to be built or not.
And it would affect impervious coverage as well.
Correct. I'm not sure. It wasn't in 1/255 National Equity Square, it's a national street. You know, it's in the street, it is up to that, we should research. Make that the connection.
Yeah.
I mean, they are proposing right up to the limit, so...
So if that chunk should be counted, then they would be over the limit and would not be meeting the spirit of the requirement. So I think it's important to determine whether that right-of-way should or should not count.
Well, the setbacks here are 26, so it's 25.
But wouldn't it be on their, the deed?
Yeah.
No, but in terms of, when they had the survey done, won't it tell you what the lot area is? Because they're paying taxes essentially on a...
It does. We submitted a survey that does show that. As I'd indicated, and I think Mr. Bridger, perhaps Ms. Casey can confirm, the whole notion of the King's Highway literally goes back to an undetermined right that dates back to the 1700s that no one, in my opinion or my experience, has ever tried to enforce. But the title companies, if you're doing anything on Route 27, not just in Princeton but elsewhere, accept that out as a title issue, but they don't, but they recognize that the overall lot size includes that as well, and that's what we're doing here. No one has ever sought to enforce, to my knowledge, the King's Highway. It's just something, like I said, that goes back hundreds of years as a potential issue.
That is what history is all about. It goes back a lot in time.
That I understand.
Good.
You know, I can address perhaps a number of the comments and concerns that were raised by Mr. Mian, but if you guys want me to do that now, I'm happy to do so. But I did have just one clarifying question for Mr. Mian. The solar panels that you're proposing, are they in the front of the house, the rear of the house? Where are they to be located?
On the roof.
Where on the roof?
On the roof that faces the backyard.
The backyard, okay. I just wanted to clarify that for the record. Do you want me to address those comments now or do you want to continue with the open public portion?
Let's see if anyone else wishes to address the case and then we can go to you.
Thank you.
Would you come and go through the same ritual?
Is your house, when you're facing this property, is it to the left or to the right?
Oh, my house?
Are you together?
Oh, no.
Lot 6.
Lot 6.
He was the first.
So to the northeast.
Okay.
Ma'am, would you state your name and address for the record?
Carrie Eisenberger, 763 Kingston Road.
All right, then we'll ask you to be sworn in. Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful? Thank you.
Could you please use a microphone because I'm having a job hearing you speak?
For the record, it's Lot 20.
Is this, is it on or...
Lot 20?
And speak into it if you would, because we need to get you on the record as well as listening.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Well, give it a go.
I guess my issue is not with the fact that they're planning on tearing down and rebuilding, but with the size of the house and the setback requirements, from what I'm hearing. So the, I feel like the house would be out of place with the neighborhood, and looking at the existing lots, the houses range in size from 1,500 square feet to around 2,200 square feet, and the proposed house is 4,000 square feet. So it would be pretty much double the size of the houses on either side of Route 27 there. Also, I guess you were talking about the... Lot 20?
Hop and speak into it if you would, because we need to get you on the record as well as listening.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Or give it a go.
I guess my issue is not with the fact that they're planning on tearing down and rebuilding, but with the size of the house and the setback requirements, from what I'm hearing. So the, I feel like the house would be out of place with the neighborhood, and looking at the existing lots, the houses range in size from 1,500 square feet to around 2,200 square feet, and the proposed house is 4,000 square feet. So it would be pretty much double the size of the houses on either side of Route 27 Also, I guess you were talking about the setback from the road. My house is over 100 feet setback from the road, so I don't think, it sounds like it's not, it doesn't sound like it'll be consistent with the other setbacks in the neighborhood also.
I don't know about that.
And I guess the engineer was talking about how the other lots were undersized. I didn't quite understand what he meant about that.
Well, the required lot area in that region is 21,780 square feet, if I understand Mr. Bridger's memorandum correctly. And any lot that is smaller than that will be classified as an undersized lot. And if it's any comfort, about 50 to 60 percent of the lots in Princeton, the new combined Princeton, are undersized from that viewpoint.
But undersized for a 2,000 square foot?
They're not meeting the requirements of the zone in which they are situated.
Okay.
And this is why he has to be here requesting permission to develop.
Okay.
That's the only, only reason.
So I guess the size of the house, the 4,000 square feet on a .46 lot, I'm really concerned about the stormwater runoff, because I've been living there for over 10 years, and we've had water issues that have gotten a lot worse in the past 10 years. And I've, over the past few years, have called the town, but we've been told since we live, it's a state highway, they have to talk to New Jersey DOT, and we've talked to them over the years to have, and they have come out and looked at the water issues, because it's basically created like a gutter on the side of the road where the road has eroded. And it was recently repaved, so if you went there now, you wouldn't see it, but we've...
The issue of water is really, again, not a zoning issue, and the town engineer has the responsibility to see that any redevelopment avoids the problem you raised.
And we can probably address that further, perhaps just to give a comfort level to the folks that spoke.
Because on our road, we don't have any storm drains on any portion of Route 27. Where the road behind us on Prospect, there's storm drains in probably the equal, there's probably a dozen storm drains in like a quarter mile where we don't have any. And any new house that's been put in has put in their, a storm drain right in front of the house. So we don't, there aren't any storm drains on Route 27, so building a house 4,000 square feet, where is all that water runoff going to go, and how is that going to affect the neighborhood? So those are my issues.
That's a genuine issue, but that's an engineering issue. Mr. Bridger, you wanted to address that?
There's a stormwater management ordinance, and as part of their submission, returning an engineer, they have to comply with the stormwater. We really direct all the gas stops, and we provide all the, you know, for the, you know, for the...
It's not like your normal stormwater.
Catching what we're producing.
I guess also just the other thing, I guess, you know, I understand that this, that they're, the developers are just buying it to flip the house. I guess I saw it listed on a website, Princeton Fix and Flip, so it's, they're looking to maximize profits and turn the house around as soon as possible, so it looks like they have a target to sell the house at 1.4 million, which, my point is, do we need a 4,000 square foot house? Can't you build a 3,000 square foot house with better quality and still reach your, you know, profit potential on the property?
As soon as the board's ready, I'm prepared to address all of these questions.
The problem, the problem with this particular case and probably most cases that we actually see, we're, we're here to talk about a lot, not so much the building that's going on it, because they're not asking for a variance. You know, these, these zones are set up for half acre, right, which is, you know, half of 43, 560, over 21,000 and change. And these are builder acres or builder half acres, which are just clean 200 by 100 foot lots. So all of these are undersized. So what they're coming to us is saying, if we take this house down, if we don't get a variance to be able to build on an undersized lot, build anything, 3,000, 2,000, 4,000, that the lot is unusable. So that's what the variance is for. And, and, you know, to your point, yes, could it be a 3,000? Yes, could it be a 4,000? But they're not asking to build over what is permitted by the zoning ordinance. So that's, that's not even being brought to us tonight. All they just want to do is say, we want to build on this lot, and that's what they're asking for. So that's, that's all we can rule on. Not that your points aren't valid, but it's just...
I thought, well, the letter stated that the property had to be 21,780 square feet, where the existing lot is 20,000 square feet.
And that's the variance that they're looking for. It's just the physical piece of land.
So you don't have any control over the size of a house someone builds?
The ordinance defines the size of the house that can be built through a floor area ratio issue and the required setbacks. And they have given testimony this evening that they will honor all of those constraints on what, that comes with the property. And as has been said, the real issue is, can they build on the property or not? And they've come to ask the board for permission to do that, given that the lot is undersized. But we get, we have three cases like that this evening, and that's just how Princeton is. People that plot the zones down didn't take any cognizance of the lots that were there already.
Okay, then...
You have another point.
The only other comment was, I guess, about the right-of-way. I'm not sure. I know we had a fence in the front of our house, we took it down, we were debating about putting it back up again, and I know, I called the town and talked to the state. So, because we were trying to figure out if we could put it closer to the road, but they did say that there is a right-of-way on the property, so we couldn't put it, say, if I, if I put it within 10 feet, that the state at some point could come and, that they had right to that land if they decide to widen the road at some point. So we didn't put any fence up. We just took it down, but...
Could I just ask clarification of this witness? You're on Lot 27?
No, she's on Lot 7.
Lot 7.
Oh, boy.
Are you one lot, are you next door to the gentleman who spoke before?
Yes.
Uh, yes, north.
Your lot 7.
So two houses north of the proposed...
Two people with similar spelled names or similar sounding names. But again, whenever the board is ready, we'll be happy to address those, those questions.
Good. Thank you very much, or do you have still something to say? No, you can just stuff that back in the slot. Hope it's there. Good. Is anyone else here for this case? Would you also come forward and go through our ritual?
Hello, my name is Nancy Sworzek, and I promise to tell the truth.
Okay.
I don't know these folks, but, sorry, Captain.
It's very difficult, the air conditioning is so noisy in this room that we can't hear you.
I don't know these folks. We came tonight because next...
Just as a matter of housekeeping, could we have her sworn in, please?
Oh, I thought I said I would...
Oh, that's all right. I'll formally say, you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Absolutely, yes.
And can you do me a favor and repeat your name once again?
My name is Nancy Sworzek. I live at 18 Rollingmead in Princeton Township. And my husband and I are here tonight because we have a similar circumstance that we're going to be here in December talking about, and we just wanted to get a little bit of footwork in in terms of what goes on at meetings. And I guess that my question to the board is that, this is a story I hear over and over, and I'm just wondering, and I'm asking the developers, the lawyers, what is the recourse, if not through the zoning board, in terms of protecting the character of our neighborhoods? This is a similar situation where, you know, we'll talk about it more next month, but I'm just asking, what is the recourse? Where do we go if the zoning board cannot control the size of the homes, the change of the character for people like my husband and myself who are retirees, and people like us that want to buy houses that cost under 1.4 million dollars in Princeton and don't want to pay taxes on that house? How can we keep Princeton fair to all who want to live here? And that's my only question tonight, and I'm going to come back next month, because next month, this will definitely be a similar case. But I'm just appealing to you tonight to just answer the question, and I'd also like to ask the developers, is there a reason why a house cannot be built on the same footprint? Does it always have to be about somebody walking away with a huge profit and then leaving behind a neighborhood that was treasured for the diversity and the income of the people and the age of the people? I just want to ask the board to please consider this as we come through month after month, and appealing to you to keep Princeton diverse in the quality of the neighborhoods and the diversity. And that's all I have to say.
I'm very sympathetic to the comments you make, but unfortunately, the purpose of the zoning board is not to decide what can be done.
Then where do we go?
The council.
The council has that responsibility, and they are currently talking about changing ordinances.
We were at the meeting last night.
Making the match and so on. And in my opinion, and I've said this several months in a row now, is that if you have the sort of concerns that you've expressed, you have to let the mayor and council know and try and make suggestions that you think will help the situation that you're complaining about. Whether or not they will act on that, nobody can tell, but whatever they say, then we will try and adjudicate a case where somebody says, well, I need a little bit more floor area, or I need to build it a little closer, or whatever. Our job is in a way to see whether a reasonable exception to the strict regulations can be made.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate all the time that all of you devote, because we, we went to the council meeting last night, we've been to zoning meetings, and the time that you devote, and I know that you can't change the stats the way they are, but I'd like to ask the developers, is there some reason you have to build a 4,000 square foot lot when you could build a, build a house a little bit smaller? Is there some reason other than profit? And that's my question.
So I also think, are you here for 12 Rollingmead? Because we're going to hear that tonight. I know, we're going to hear that tonight, not next month.
I was understood that that was canceled. I believe that Dennis said that was canceled.
No, it's going to be re-noticed.
I'm sorry, we did not get noticed that it was going to be tonight. There was a mix-up in the dates, and I believe Bob called you.
I'm sorry, I'm mistaken.
Okay. Yeah, it's still on the agenda, but it was canceled until December. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? So maybe you would like to address the comments that have been made by the public?
I would, and one of the things I'd like to do is call our architect up. While he's making his way up here, I'll address a couple of the items that, that have been mentioned with regard to the size of the home, as was indicated by you and a couple of members of the board. That's not before you here this evening. We're obligated to satisfy all of your ordinance requirements, including floor area ratio, setbacks, et cetera. And to the extent that the lot is smaller, it affects, for instance, the size of the home that can be built, and we still have to comply with the FAR. If the lot were larger by the 1,780 square feet, we would theoretically be able to build a larger home. But we will comply with all of your requirements. Princeton is actually one of the few municipalities that actually regulates floor area ratio for single-family homes. Most municipalities don't do that, and, but we will obviously comply with your floor area requirements. In fact, all of your requirements, with the one exception of lot size, which gets to the issue of can you build or rebuild, as the case may be, or not. And otherwise, not only affect this lot owner, but affect other property owners in the foreseeable future. One of the issues here was indicated was the neglect of the home. And indeed, the prior owner did in fact neglect the home, and in which case it was eventually sold. We're trying to deal with that. And unfortunately, the home in this particular case is going to need to be rebuilt, and they're proposing to demolish that particular house. But unfortunately, that happens in the course of time. And there is the need to be able to gentrify a neighborhood, to rebuild, as the case may be, with the circumstances warrant, but we are honoring everything that your ordinance asks of us, and we will continue to do so, again, with the one exception being the lot size that we're here for this evening. With that, I'd like to introduce our architect and ask that he be sworn in.
So would you state your name for the record?
Frau Finelli.
All right, Mr. Finelli, if you'd raise your right hand, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask you a couple of different questions. First of all, the house that's being proposed satisfies all the requirements within the ordinance?
Yes, it does.
One of the comments was made about their concern about their solar field. Again, not the subject of the application this evening, but we want to do our best to be respectful and responsive to the questions that have been raised. You have, first of all, I'm sorry, before I get ahead of myself, if you would please describe your educational professional background?
Sure. I've been licensed since 1984. I've been in private practice since 1987. I've appeared before this board a few years ago, Princeton Borough, when it was distinct, numerous boards throughout New Jersey and Pennsylvania and New York.
And you've been accepted and qualified as an expert in architecture?
Yes.
And is part of what you do also involving solar systems relative to homes and the like?
Yes.
And you've had an opportunity to hear the comment or the concern that was raised by one of the neighbor with regard to a solar, rooftop solar that they're going to put on their roof that's not been put on their roof, but is proposed to be. And in particular, the fact that the solar is in the rear of their home. Their concern was that this application was going to somehow affect it. Can you please walk us through that and let us know what, what your professional opinion is?
Sure. I'm going to refer to, I'll refer to the plan that Dave showed you before, and the neighbor who raised a question about the solar is just to, as you face the house from the road, is to the left of the property. You can see the, the north arrow here, so the property is there, the sunrise is obviously in the east, sets in the west. His solar system, or the solar system in that house is proposed to be in the backyard of the property. That house has a straight gable roof, so from the side, it's just an A-frame, it's not a hip roof. So all of the surface area facing the back of the yard is where, by description, I'm assuming is where the solar panels would be. It wouldn't make sense for them to be in the, in the front of the house, that would be the north side, obviously, there's no, no direct sunlight. So the back of their house is going to grab the sun from sunrise till, you know, even without a structure here, maybe 3:30, 4 o'clock in the afternoon. The principal and the most productive area, time constraint for solar gain is about 9:30 to 3 o'clock in the afternoon. After that, the angle of the sun is less, the intensity is less, and really, as close to due south as possible is where the most solar gain is going to be held. So with that property, immediately to our northeast, the, the structure that we're proposing, again, it is pretty much in alignment, both the back wall and the front wall, the main box of the house is pretty much in alignment. There will be no effect on the solar panels of the, on the back of the neighboring house.
You said there will be no shadow from your property on the house.
Correct. But, you know, the setback and the height to setback ratios that Princeton zoning employs are really, not totally unique, but almost unique. It's one of the few places that has not only just a, you know, a straight dimensional requirement, but also a ratio. And so for that reason alone, mostly to, you know, to not, not deny a neighbor fresh air and natural sunshine, that's one reason why, that's probably the principal reason why that was instituted. And because of that, and because of the proposed compliance with all those regulations, there will be no shadow cast from our building to that backside.
Is it summer sun you're talking about, or a winter sun?
That's both. That's both.
Neither in winter nor summer?
Correct. During, during that primary, most productive section.
During that limited period of time, 9 till 3.
Yeah, 9:30 to 3:30, about 120 degrees.
Yeah.
Path to the sun. Yeah.
Okay.
The house that you're proposing on this site, will it satisfy all of the ordinance requirements?
Yes, we will meet all of the bulk requirements.
I have nothing further for Ralph at this time.
Thank you very much.
I did have a couple of follow-up questions for Dave. Dave, again, you know, just for the record, I want to remind, as was pointed out, that this is really the conversation for another forum, but I want to do my best to be respectful and responsive to the questions that have been raised. So the comment or the concern that was raised with regard to stormwater runoff, how will that function here? Will it have any impact on the neighbors?
Well, currently, there is no stormwater management for the property, and what we're proposing for Jack West, the Assistant Talents of Engineer, to do is we have an increase of 866 square feet additional impervious surface coverage, that's the hard stuff. The existing lot had no stormwater management. We're going to propose stormwater management for the house. The roof leaders are going to go into a, either a dry well or a, some type of a bed that's going to infiltrate the water into the ground, so the runoff is going to be less than actually in the proposed condition than it is in the existing conditions.
The borough engineer will be responsible for seeing that that functions.
Absolutely.
So it's not a zoning issue per se?
Correct. So the things that we've talked about, that we sought to be responsive to the neighbors but are not before the board, are things that your professional staff will address in the ordinary course. So things like stormwater, making sure that the setbacks comply, that the height-to-setback ratio, all of those things that we're talking about, there is a mechanism to make sure there's compliance. We just wanted to go through it here again to be respectful and responsive to the public and to the board with regard to the questions that had been raised. I think those are the questions that had been raised, and hopefully, we've addressed them, but as was indicated, we're asking for very small variance for the lot size, and we're complying with everything else, and those other items are ultimately not here, as was indicated before this board.
Okay, thank you. Do we have questions we wish to ask, or have we exhausted? All right, so then we'll go into executive session. What are your thoughts?
You know, if I might, just before you wrap up.
I'm sorry?
Just give me an opportunity to kind of do my own wrap-up on this application, if you don't mind?
Oh, so you want to make a closing statement before we go into it?
Well, you're going to executive session?
We have any, we make a decision at this point, unless you've got something urgent that you need to say.
No, I just wanted to make sure that I summed up the application and make sure that the proofs are clear with regard to the C1 variance that we proposed. And specifically, we've got a lot, it's constrained, we don't have availability of excess land, we've put everyone on notice, given the opportunity to purchase at a fair market value, no one has indicated an interest or willingness to do so, so the only thing is before the board is with regard to the lot size. The hardship essentially speaks for itself with regard to this application, given the fact that the difference between what we're proposing and what your ordinance would require is a relatively modest amount, as I said, about 8% of the lot size. It causes us to constrain perhaps other aspects of the application, but we're meeting all of those, so I would submit that not only is there no detriment to the public good, but we're actually improving what's now an ISO, and a property that has been indicated not only by us but by the neighbors, that's a significant neglect. It's an older property that needs some, more than TLC, but in any event, we're also addressing not only that, but taking care of the nonconformity that exists now with the existing driveway that does impede upon not only the right-of-way, but the setbacks as well, if I recall correctly. So with that having been said, I would submit that the hardship is evident in the application itself and the nature of the application, based upon, as well as the efforts that we've made with regard to selling or acquiring additional lands, and I would submit that there's no significant detriment to the public good, your zone plan or your zone ordinance as a result of the application pending before you this evening.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Do we have any discussion among ourselves about this, it seems?
I'm sorry, just one housekeeping matter, just want to make sure.
One more?
Forgive me.
We charge by the hour, half to 15 minutes.
We charge by the words, so. Just, the only housekeeping matter is, assuming the board is inclined to approve this application, we'd just be asked that we'd be able to proceed as quickly as possible, call a billing permit, obviously at our own risk, but even before the resolution has been adopted, we'd ask you to give us that opportunity as well.
Mr. Bridger is the person that will be able to assure you as to when you can safely start.
Well, Mr. Forster, I'm not sure that it's in the board's purview to give you permission to begin construction, so. Pardon? Well, no, but that's, I don't think that's within the board's purview to tell them whether they can or they can't, so, I mean.
We can certainly work through that with professional staff, and, you know, and we'll work that with you and the construction department to see about addressing that issue.
This is irrelevant as far as our decision-making is concerned.
Understood.
If we say no, you won't have to worry about anything. Okay, so we'll go into executive session now, and you won't feel that you need another word?
I'll keep my mouth shut for exchange.
Good. Thank you. So, what is your pleasure?
Well, it would seem, it would seem to me that this is typical of many applications we hear, and some of the comments from the audience are the same that we hear. It is something that I understand the council is going to take up in terms of size of houses compatible with adjoining houses, but again, that's not within our, that's not within our purview, and we're basically here just to hear a lot area variance, and I see no reason that we should not approve it, as we have approved many, many others in the same situation.
You're going to make a motion to that?
I'd like to make a motion to approve it.
I just want to make one comment. So I agree with all of those comments, that I think we're here for the lot size, and that's it, but I do think it is important to do a little research about the right-of-way, because I think that will absolutely affect the application for, you know, when they submit for zoning approval and building approval, because that will, could potentially affect the neighborhood. So I think, I mean, just to, I just wanted to state that, and so that, you know, everybody hears it, and Derek's ready for when he receives the permit application, so, that's what I wanted to say.
So that's tacked onto your?
Yes.
Resolution. Good. Anyone else have any comments? Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second? Are you going to second the motion with your?
I'll second.
Chair?
So we have a motion and a second. Could you call the roll for us, please?
Chair? Chairman?
I think we're done with the public comments at this point.
Yeah, we've made our decision.
I have a question.
You can talk to somebody about it later, but not now. We're about to call the roll.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Harrington?
Yes.
Ms. Raxton?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Chairman Rose?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
But with the caveat about the floor area ratio as it's impacted.
Right, that is, because that will impact.
By the right-of-way.
Okay. Well, the impervious is not even close, even if they lose that right-of-way, but the floor area, they are, they're at their limit, so that does make a, it's really the only thing that would be impacted by that.
Okay, so let's go to our next case, which is 7 Leitel Street. This is a reinterpretation or something, and we have the case number Z1515-278V.
Wouldn't this have been easier the first time you were here?
Yes.
All right.
Chairman Rose, I want to take for the record that the notice listing order in the board has jurisdiction to hear the application.
Mr. Bridger, do you have any particular comments you wish to make about your memorandum to clarify issues for the board?
Do you have any questions? I can, whatever your question is.
The situation is an appeal of determination, is that right?
Yeah, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a story. I'm just not sure where it falls in the approval process. I think the stairs probably constitute a variance, a setback variance, but the deck itself is, I'm not sure what it is, so that's, due to the small size of the lot, I thought it was best that the board come back and review the application.
Okay.
Thank you. Glad to be here. I'm Chris Tarr, representing the applicant Lou Barber and his corporate entity. I thought it might be best for Lou to remind you, he was here earlier in the year, and the house is now up, and we just have this one small issue to take up with you, so he could quickly run through the history if we could both be sworn.
Gentlemen, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
I've handed out a couple of photographs and the definition of story from the borough ordinance, and if that could be A1.
It's a very small lot, I don't know if you recall. The front of the house is on the property line, the sides are like a foot and a half, and the backyard, six foot deep, which we knew going in. In building the house, which is now complete, I felt it would be nice to have outside space, and the roof, which is flat, seemed like a great place to have some outside space on the property. So I've put a stairs up on the back, instead of, I guess, I'm not sure what we are allowed to do, but it's an open stairs, it's over the footprint of the building.
I missed the point about it's allowed to do, what, how did that come in?
Well, which is not clear.
Whether you were allowed to do that without further permission?
Exactly, yeah, because we could put up a ladder, from what I understand, well, we just don't have a clear picture. We can put up a ladder to go up there, but it's kind of unsafe. This is an open stairs, safer than a ladder, to access the roof deck, and we're looking for clarity as to what's allowed and what's not allowed.
So that's, so it comes in two parts. I think Derek has pointed out that he thinks that the roof of a building is not a story, where three stories are permitted in the RB zone, and that would be a fourth story if it had a roof over it and were a story. So the very last page of the materials that we gave you is a copy of the definition of a story from the borough code, and I think as you read it, you see that it, this rooftop does not fit the definition of a story, and I think Derek said he didn't think it did, but he just wanted you to check him out, and so that's, is our understanding of the situation.
The issue of a story is perhaps an important one, but it seems to me that you came in to the board with a certain thing for which you required a variance. The board was split in its decision about that, and you've now done some things which, from my viewpoint, the old borough certainly would have said, was increasing the degree of nonconformity. And I would have thought that that made it necessary for you to come back to the board. You're arguing that you have not increased the degree of nonconformity?
I believe Mr. Bridger has decided that.
I'm sorry?
I think that's Mr. Bridger's determination. There's no FAR involved in a surface, a roof surface, and there's no, it's, his only question was whether it was a story, and looking at the story definition, I think...
Oh, there's a setback situation.
The stairs and, that's...
It's a different issue. The stairs, the spiral stair is all that is, would involve...
Increased the degree of nonconformity.
Yes, yes, right, but not the rooftop. I mean, I thought we were...
I, well, no, I'm just wanting to, I'm just wanting to understand.
Right, and so I suggested...
And previously, you had had open space floor down, if I count the top as a floor rather than a story.
Yeah, the photograph you have here, there's a small deck.
The blue...
Is a deck in the back.
That was where we, when we were thinking about it, were expecting it to have a deck, is that right?
So, again, if I, I wanted to break it down into two bite-sized pieces. The upper surface of the home is flat, and it was a question raised as to whether that constituted a story, so that there would be four stories where only three are allowed. And I think if you read this definition, it's pretty clear on its face that this surface upstairs is not a story, it is not a nonconformity or noncompliance. So I just wanted to start there.
Are we going to build a trellis in a year and come back?
Okay, yeah, what's the next point, then? Because I think we get that, your first point, so your second point?
The second point is that the staircase going up to it, a structure is defined as any combination of materials, and therefore, the staircase is a combination of materials. You recall that this house, the lot is so small that the house encroaches into the rear yard and the side yard, and to the extent that this staircase is in the plane of the house, in that what was open space, it likewise encroaches into those rear and side yards. Mr. Barber said he thought it was a safe and attractive way to get to the roof. There are other ways, you could go through a hatch on the inside, you could have a detachable ladder that you could lay down on the floor, but this is attractive, and I know at least one of his neighbors is here to say that he thinks it's fine, and he, Mr. Barber tells me that he's talked to the other neighbors who think it's handsome, but nevertheless, technically, it is a structure. The ladder, the staircase would need a C1 or a C2 variance from you, or it would have to be removed. That's where we stand, so. I think Dr. Vasselli wanted to, wanted to comment, or any other members of the public, and then I could wrap up, that's really all we've got.
I remember a similar problem that we had, it's by the engineering school, the urologist's house that is opposite the building of the Princeton University Press. Or the former building of the Princeton University Press, and he made similar arguments which violated the desire of the board. We gave him an envelope in which to make his development, and then he said, "Well, the envelope wasn't big enough to do what he wanted, and he felt he could put a this and a that, and so he managed to put a swimming pool and then another layer on the top," which, while I was in Europe, somehow he managed to get through the board. I didn't understand why.
Well, in this, in this case, though...
This is slightly different, but it's got the same words of caution, and I'm very worried about this idea of the way a story is defined, but if we can't do anything about that, we can't do anything about that. Lawyer will have to give us advice on that.
But we do have the stair issue.
The stair issue is...
The stair issue, and when we heard this initially, obviously, as you said, the board was split on its voting, and we were concerned about the size of the house on the lot, and specifically, we talked about open space. And specifically, you said that you were comfortable with the setbacks, because we had talked about...
Well, you allowed the house to be moved forward.
Well, we allowed the house to be moved forward, and we talked about the size of the house, and the fact that there is no, there was minimal usable open space on the ground level, and you were comfortable with it.
Right, and when we were building it, this opportunity came up that there's some nice space, so.
But why not come to the board first and get...
I feel like we would, when we heard this application the last time, a lot of us operated on good faith, that you were operating in good faith. And you were trying to do nice things to this neighborhood, and do better things that, you know, better than what was there, which were dilapidated situations, but I do feel like the fact that you just went ahead and decided that you thought that this would be better, and you didn't feel that you at all, it didn't even occur to come before the board and ask, because you had already gotten quite a bit of variance from us on good faith, that doesn't make me feel very good about accepting this, which you just decided would be good for you and good for your price, because I see that it's also for sale. So I, you know, it doesn't matter what it looks like, it doesn't matter how, you know, how great it is, I mean, I think that you're not acting in good faith with us, and we really, truly, and twice, we acted in good faith with you. us. And we really, truly, and twice, we acted in good faith with you.
Well, I'm not seeing it that way. I mean, from my understanding, I'm allowed to have the roof deck. That's not an issue. It's, the issue is how to get up there. And if this isn't acceptable, then I'll take it down. But then I'm understanding we can use a ladder, which is not as safe. But so it's, I don't think I'm trying to pull a fast one.
But you already built it.
Well, I'll take it down.
And it wasn't on the plans that we, you know, yeah.
I have a problem with, this was the first time that I was on the board, when we actually did this back in, in February. And the, the issue I have is, you know, if, I was worried about two things. Firstly, I was surprised there weren't any historical things on Lidle Street, but that is what it is. But I was worried about the height of the property compared to every, every other house on the street. I have to say, I voted in favor because I thought, well, if there's a parking space, you can't do anything but go through stories. If the, if the railings had been on the top, as you've rendered it here back then, I wouldn't have been voting in favor. So I'm sort of on the same, same vein as Luisa. I think it's a, it's a big change that's, that's sort of gone through against what we voted for.
I have a question. We hear it loud and clear. The last guy took a whole lot of time. Let's not take a lot of time. We'll take this staircase down, but I just want to make sure that, from our point of view, a temporary ladder that hooks up to the top and lies down on the deck, that's.
Okay. I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna interrupt you for one second, because it is not our issue, the safety of the people who want to approach the roof deck. We did not approve a roof deck. If we say that we don't like the stair, and you're now trying to transfer that issue of safety onto the zoning board? No.
No, no.
You cannot do that.
We're drawing, we're drawing the application, Ms. Clayton. Let's, let's just leave it at that. Okay? Let's just leave it at that.
Well, here's a question. What about the railings?
That's, that's why I had to come back to the board. The railings are the same as the stairs. I mean, they're going up on a, in a setback that was approved for a flat roof. I mean, that's what you guys, that's why you're here. I mean.
Well, I, I think that's a good point. These are the points that annoy, first of all, it annoys me that you didn't go through the proper pathways. Princeton is a small town. The zoning officer and so on are very accessible. And this seems to have snuck up on the board in a way which we didn't anticipate. I voted for it in the last case, and I'm sort of irritated. It seems to me also, when we've had cases of this ilk, not identical, but with some of the issues, that having a high-level observation point is really quite annoying to a number of neighbors. And particularly from my viewpoint, since I have an obsession with excessive light spillage in, in an urban environment, there is a noise penalty for having a roof space which is occupied and a light penalty. And I don't think this is a trivial change to the variance that you were given, which I, because it was a split variance, I thought was a fairly generous initial variance. So I am very negative about this. I believe you have increased the degree of non-conformity in the way that is consistent historically in the borough, by putting railings and by putting a staircase. And if you remove those, then you can, I guess, leave a flat roof. I have no objection to a flat roof. Or you using a ladder from the deck to get up to the flat roof. You've got to get the leaves off.
The roof is not, it's not.
Sorry?
The roof is not, was not usable open space. This was an application for a three-story home, and there was never any use in the roof for anything other than a roof.
But it's a roof.
But it's a roof.
Yeah.
Okay.
If we stop.
Without a railing.
Without a railing.
Without railing.
Right.
If we stop now, you can get home in time for the debates. We withdraw the application.
You're withdrawing the application.
But I, can I ask?
So then you're going to remove the stairs and remove the railings?
Correct.
Okay.
Just a quick question, if I could. Was it this house, or the one next door, that you were gonna live there, and that was part of your pitch? And the next thing I see was two for-sale signs going up?
There was one that, that.
Which, which house were you gonna live in?
I've been living in Nine Lidle for the last 18 months.
Which was gonna be your permanent home? Which one?
It's been Nine Lidle.
And are you selling that one?
Yes, I am.
But that was part of your pitch to us?
Well, I live there, I've been living there for 18 months. I've owned it for two years.
Okay. That's, that's.
That's legit.
That's your response?
Well, it's not a pitch. I mean, it's.
No. You've withdrawn your case, and so I.
I mean, but it's not a pitch. I've lived in Lidle for.
Yeah, it's nothing to do with us.
Yes.
Good night.
Thanks.
Good night. Okay. So the last case of the evening is, sorry?
It's not here. It'll be here next.
Next week.
I'm sorry, there was a.
We're not hearing it.
Oh, we're not hearing.
No, it's gonna be renoticed, and it'll be in front of you in December.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't get that. So then we have a final piece of business, which is a discussion of a report that we owe the mayor and council about our suggestions for changes in zoning ordinances. I scribbled some stuff, and Mr. Bridger, who I think circulated to you all, a copy of what we are proposing to send to the borough council. I can't find my copy. It's gotta be, yeah, that's, that's the piece. But it, yeah, all right, that's it. I gather you will seen this, and the question is, do you wish to make any changes to it or add things? Have we learned something this evening? Do we need to get a story defined properly by the council?
Because I'm surprised there weren't any neighbors here, maybe it's.
So that things like this don't happen?
Thank you. Oh, this is from the, okay, I have this.
We need to get this document put together formally so that we can approve it in our December meeting. So I think if you've got any issues you think we've missed, and I think, given the discussion we've just finished, the definition of a story may need to be de-ambiguated or whatever. The right ugly phrase.
To be further defined, so, so the issue of enclosure, or the issue of a roof.
Yes.
Is becomes the idea of using it, using it for something other than a roof.
Yeah, but I still, even, even with that, that's not, even if they were using that, it still should not be a story.
I don't, I don't think it's a story, if you read the definition.
A usable part of the property, and it may exceed the height, but it needs to be defined. That's when we get into situations with.
Yeah.
I mean, I think the issue here was you had a 25-foot wide lot with eight and 20, or eight yard smaller, eight foot smaller side yard and a 20 combined. So you have a five-foot building envelope that they could build a deck. I mean, that's, that's how I see it. If they'd have come in with the railings up there, it's the same as the stairs. I think it's an increase in the degree of non-compliance. And, you know, I was throwing out story because I was like, what do I do? I walk down that street, I see this structure up there that was not approved, was no permits issued zoning, or, you know, I don't know if they got construction, but they didn't get zoning approval. And I thought it should come back to the board. But I don't, I think it's a stretch to call it a story underneath the municipal annus loll definition.
Whether you call it, it needs to be defined. There needs to be some clarity in here that would define.
Stevie and Mike's off.
Whether you call it a story or not, it has to be recognized in the ordinance as a, as a usable space.
Okay.
Yeah. So if you, so you're talking a habitable roof somehow is.
Yeah.
Got to be counted as part of something or other that is associated with the building in a way that the zoning for the lot takes it into account.
But his design is very excessive. And I think, you know, that there was, it was almost, you know, filled with a sense of, you know, power. And that's not, you know, this is a very crowded neighborhood that he's living in. And, you know, just to go ahead and do that, I mean, I just found that kind of, you know, unrealistic and unacceptable.
He, I have, I have several comments on it too.
With a bravado.
You're on record, you shouldn't.
He withdrew the application, and so it's not under our consideration.
That's right.
What we have to be concerned about now is.
Is this, is, we might want to think about that before we finalize this document.
You know, frustrating, and I know we can't hold this, but to your point, Floyd, we've had cases here before. I don't know if you remember, there was the two houses, this is before the, the township joined. There was a house over by Han, and then there was a house over on Prospect. And the guy came in, he goes, I'm building this one for me, and I'm building this one for my, my parents. And he got the variance, and the for-sale signs were, were up before they even broke ground.
It happens all the time.
It happened on Wee Chief, remember? It was actually Sarah's cousin. She goes, oh, he's great. Was it her sister?
We had, we had one I drive by every day.
Yeah. And it's like, oh, and we're, I'm building.
We approved nothing in the front yard.
That's for Harrison.
Yeah. And the thing I understand is, they're under oath.
That I won't have to say.
So how is, they're not in contempt?
And put it on the state law long time ago.
It's not an actionable contempt in some senses.
You're on record.
It just means that we need to be more circumspect in listening to stuff like that, which is really irrelevant to zoning. Whether you live in it or not, doesn't matter.
Well, I mean, I think, I think some of this, some of the, obviously speaking to the memo that will go to council, I think, I think the things in here do address some of our concerns, and maybe this additional one which comes up.
Yeah.
At least to the extent we can identify them now.
Just like this situation tonight with the deck. If that meant the setbacks, and it meant the height, what, is that something we want to regulate? I mean, I do see decks more and more on small lots, balconies and, you know.
Fall within the, fall within the, you know, the setbacks, the height to setback ratio. So again, you know, there would, in a sense, maybe there's nothing to prevent them from putting a stair from the center of the roof, in the center of the top floor, up to a very small usable area defined by, defined by the height to setback ratio. As one, it's within the height. But then again, two, you know, is the height to the structure? And now all of a sudden, you put a six-foot tall person on there, and it becomes, is that something that's counted in the height?
Well, you decide to grow roses to shield you from the neighborhood.
I'm saying, like, he puts up a trellis.
Was it Luisa who said that the, you know, that becomes an imposition on a neighborhood?
Where you take this, you know, tower, I won't call it a towering structure, but it's a higher usable area that, that overlooks adjacent.
People are very sensitive.
And it becomes, it becomes an imposition.
Yeah. I agree.
Well, isn't, isn't.
Okay. Well, Luke and I will think about that aspect.
Like, on this case, my memo said it violates the front side and rear yard setbacks. So I think, I think that's our guide. You know, like, we could have granted the variance today, but you didn't. But, so I think there's a control mechanism in place. I mean, I'm really of putting more and more regulations on, you know, people in town. I don't want to, unless you guys want to start controlling second-floor balconies, third-floor balconies, you know.
I mean, we don't want to, we don't want to get rid of all the sort of, you know, we do want to allow people to have, you know, interesting things with their houses and do interesting things. So I don't think we want to put too many regulations on and say no roof decks, because there could be situations where a roof deck would be perfectly fine and wouldn't bother anybody at all, you know, and those kinds of things. So I guess that's what makes me a little bit nervous, you know, about that. But in this particular situation, we'd already seen it. I mean, there are many reasons why I didn't agree with what he was asking for tonight.
But they really should have harsher penalties for these people who just build without a permit. Because here's what, the thing that could have happened, he could have gone away with this. Somebody would have bought the house.
Sold the house.
And then a couple of years from now, somebody goes, somebody says, hey, that's not allowed. Now the new homeowner is now stuck with it, coming here for a variance. You know, and then we're like, it's an existing condition. It's a pre-existing.
Well, you know, I think, I think in the, in one of the considerations for the council, are houses compatible in a neighborhood.
Yeah.
In, in, in a house compatible in a neighborhood, if you take the, you know, the John Witherspoon area, and, and you look at the houses there, they're all very modest houses, very nice, and, and they're getting redeveloped. And some of them are becoming obviously very large. And this, I think this, this ordinance, or the idea that the council will consider this in, in the area now, you know, would, would allow for that. Maybe that would speak to the height and the size and everything else.
I think that's really important, because the thing that's frustrating about that first case tonight was, if we'd given approval for them to build, we would have basically given them access to build this behemoth house that clearly half the neighbors don't want.
But we don't have control.
I know, I know, I get that. But it's really frustrating to sit here and say, well, yes, you can build on it, but two of the neighbors, three of the neighbors don't, don't want it to be built.
The new ordinance.
And then they think we've approved this 4,000-square-foot house, but.
But the new ordinance, or at least the idea that the council is going to study the, the redefinition of compatibility in a neighborhood, would probably address some of that. It wouldn't, it may not allow for a 4,000-square-foot house sitting in a sea of 2,500 square-foot houses.
But what do you do in a situation where you've got a very dense neighborhood that was in place before the zoning ordinances were overlaid and the setbacks and things? And these houses are, for example, built much closer to the lot lines, but maybe set much further back. So when we're talking about compatibility with the neighborhood, and in one of these, it says you can't, it's suggesting, I don't know if it's in your memo or the one with the council heard last night, but suggesting that you can't rebuild on the existing foundation if, if a house exists there. And we've seen some of those come before us, where they're building on existing foundations, and it's okay. So then you're actually taking the fabric of the existing neighborhood because the, the zoning doesn't match the existing neighborhood. And so then are we, are we actually being too proactive in the zoning when we've got existing neighborhoods where?
Well, we are.
I mean, when actually everybody really likes the fabric of those neighborhoods where they live there. And, and now suddenly we're gonna require the eight foot on one side, 12 feet on the other side, whereas right now it's five and five, but it's setback 30 feet from the street, that kind of thing. I don't know. I kind of worry maybe it's, it's, we're gonna do something detrimental.
Unfortunately, we have, unfortunately, we have to establish some base criteria.
Yeah.
You're right. I mean, every situation needs to be looked at individually, but we have to establish some base criteria to deal with.
I mean, for example, the situation on Birch, where they came to us with the variance and ended up setting the house 25 feet back on the lot. But every other house on Birch is four to six feet back on the lot. And that is now the outlier. And it's, it's horrible. I mean, like, I, I mean, I personally like the house, but I mean, the fact that it's set so far back, doesn't match the neighborhood fabric whatsoever.
But that's.
And how do you, how do we figure that? I mean, how, how do we take care of something like that? We don't want that to comply. We want them to get the variance so that they can build closer, right?
We look at compatibility, we look at compatibility of a house in a neighborhood with, with some sort of criteria.
But, but I suggested it when they came. I said, it's too bad you set the house so far back, because now it doesn't fit. But they'd already come before, it was already too late. By the time they get here, it's too late. So then what? I mean, is it an initial review with Derek? And then, but then Derek has to see everybody who wants to build a new house or do something? I mean, I don't know. I think, I feel like it's, you know, he can't handle all that.
What we've tried to do in the memorandum with all the green sludges on, is to take care of, I think, the problem you're raising, by defining within a given zone, a subzone, which might be a cluster of houses that have got the same character and the same setbacks and so on, and say, that's what we want to preserve, because we want a proper mix of housing sizes in Princeton. And if you recognize that subzone, and then say, you can rebuild with the proper setbacks and so on, in that location, you, in principle, should be able to avoid humongous houses being there, and the character of that cluster should be more or less maintained. And that was my attempt to, you know, sort of wonder how one could do that. But because we've, you know, it really is 55% or whatever of the lots in Princeton. don't conform to the zone in which they sit. But there are some of them that were so obviously clustered and intended to be on much smaller lots, and then the zone was plunked on top, that I think the council needs to recognize that when it makes the changes.
And that's the same idea with the proportional FAR?
Yes, that's right. Okay. Well, we want to get this document put together for the December meeting. So rather than trying to design it verbally as a committee of the whole, why don't we encourage you to send to Derek, or to Derek and me, or to each other, whichever is the most convenient, modifications that you think should be made, and points that we have neglected, such as the problem of a roof deck with a spiral staircase, or whatever, that we should try and find some way of taking care of. And then we'll try and get around to that.
I'm not going to be at the next meeting, so I'd like to try to clean it up before, if possible. I mean, otherwise, I can have it cleaned up, and then Jack West will cover the meeting for me next month. But it has been sent out to everyone this week for comments, and I got, Wendy had some comments.
You have had comments?
Wendy had some comments about the ceiling height that we went with the seven-foot. She was requesting a lower height, which I'm happy to put that in there. The rationale for going with the seven-foot was, I mean, in a perfect world, zoning should have some correlation to building codes, and seven-foot is usually the habitable space for an attic or a basement, so that's why that was changed. But I perfectly understand her point about developers trying to gain the height of ceilings. I mean, my interpretation on an attic is going to be to the raptor, not the ceiling. With the collar ties, I'm not going to, I'm not going to play that shell game, so.
If I could make a suggestion, because I think what Barry was saying is very useful. If perhaps the architects on the board or others who are familiar with some of the alternatives could just send them to us. My concern for this, and I think all of us have been through all of these issues, you know, from the beginning, this is weak. This is, you know, everyone, I think, is in agreement with the concept of, you know, we want to, you know, take care of or address these issues, but they're not, they're not tough enough. The council really needs some much more, I'm going to say, you know, meat on the bones here.
The change is going to take a long time.
Well, I don't know. They just, they just heard some things last night, and they're going to hear them again in December and decide. And some of them are included in this memo. So, I mean, yeah, I think this is very real. They're really looking at this. Whereas in the past, I feel like we've sent these memos, and nobody's ever been ignored, right? I don't know, they've been too busy with other things. But now, they seem to have found interest in this.
Well, I think you hear from the comments of, you know, the countless small-lot variances that we hear, the same comments over and over again, and the neighborhoods are frustrated, the board's frustrated, and there really isn't, you know, I mean, you could try to reduce the FAR in little bits and pieces, but I think now it's becoming, you know, the level of teardowns in town has just become a roar. And you see it, the council members are hearing it, and the mayor's hearing it, and that's the action last night. But that's just the opening statement. So it'll be at the planning board, and I would recommend, you know, just because you're on the board, doesn't mean you can't come to, you know, make your own personal comments at the planning board or the council hearing.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't think there's anything else we can do, is there? So let us adjourn.
Can I ask one very quick question?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Just one. Are there any consequences for, I mean, putting up the roof deck that's not approved? Are there any fines involved? Or do people...
There are, they're supposed to be. Right?
Well, the guy, the guy across the street was fined quite a bit of money, I thought. Next to Conti's?
Yeah.
They have police, they have police force.
Okay.
Police actions. I can't find people I have to take them to court, so.
Okay.
Typically, what I do in this case is go to the boards, get your case adjudicated, and take it down and keep it, like, uh...
So how long does he get to take it down if the house is already on the market?
It's not permitted. He never got it done.
The steps will come down easily on the flat roof, that's to say.
Him coming in here, making a case, and on the transcript, or the minutes, and I will find him if he does.
Find him anyway.
I mean, I have to pick my files.
Yeah.
Never, I just feel like if there...
I want to build a house.
No, yeah. But I just feel if there were consequences out there, perhaps people wouldn't, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you're welcome to come. I mean, if it's a portion of the FAR, if you wanted to discuss that, I think, that's all. Which is hurt, and you just throw it out there and just try to discuss.
Yeah, the other issue is that planning board and the subdividing the lots, the undersized lots, or creating two undersized lots.
We should, we can't forbid that, because it's a...
But whatever happened to that last time?
Well, they're approving. Well, I mean, it was Barsky. Right? I mean, he did it back 10 years ago. He subdivided it into two non-conforming lots. But still, but they're approving, they're approving...
Two or four of the lots?
Yeah, I mean, we can't stop that, unfortunately.
No, but the...
Because the planning board does it. The planning board should not be able, permitted to create lots.
Board members, board members, question. Are you adjourned now?
With what I am.
Are you adjourned?